Good evening and welcome to the fifth in a series of forums with candidates for office for November 5th that is being brought to you by Cugia Community College and The Citizen. These are shown on Spectrum, Verizon, BIOS, and Arma, the Auburn Regional Media Access, as well as played on the college's radio station, WDWN 89.1. I'm your moderator, Guy Cosentino. On November 5th, voters in the city of Auburn will get to decide if they want to return two incumbents to City Hall in November, or choose one or more challengers to replace them. Incumbent Democrats Dia Carver-Hall and Jimmy Genetino are seeking second terms and are being challenged by Republican Adam Miller, who ran two years ago, and his running mate, Timothy LaCastro, and Libertarian Justin Burchard. The position of a member of City Council is a part-time job that has a base pay of $9,073 per year and has an eligibility for health benefits. The five-member council currently is five Democrats on it. Representing the press today, as usual, is Jeremy Boyer, the executive editor of The Citizen, who will be asking the questions for all of our candidates as we go through. Before we started, the candidates drew lots to see where they would sit for their two-minute openings, and we'll introduce them now. Tim LaCastro is on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent lines. Dia Carver-Hall is on the Democratic Working Families Party, as well as the Auburn Party. Jimmy Genetino is on the Democratic Working Families Party and the Auburn Party. Justin Burchard is on the Libertarian Party, and Adam Miller is on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent lines. Welcome, all of you. We're delighted to have you in the studio. We're going to start with our two-minute openings, and then we'll turn to Mr. Boyer. Mr. LaCastro, who is on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent lines, you go first. You have two minutes. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim LaCastro, and I'm running for Auburn City Council. Thank you, Guy Cosentino, and the CCC, staff, and students for hosting this forum. Let me start by saying, I'm not here to bash the present council, mayor, or city manager personally. I will talk about issues that affect the people of Auburn. If elected, I will bring my successful business background and construction knowledge to the council and work with fellow councilors and city employees to improve our city for all people. I want to clear up rumors that I've been hearing. I'm a total supporter of police officers and firefighters. We need them to protect our city. I would never jeopardize the safety of our community. I will support a public safety building if the city manager tells me we have the money to build one without borrowing money and becoming a burden to our taxpayers. Increased taxes, borrowing, and additional fees have to stop. The city cannot keep going on, going to taxpayers, and ask them to foot the bill for projects we can't afford and maintain. My main reason for running is because I want the people of Auburn to have their voices heard at City Hall. The citizens in Auburn have so many concerns that fall on deaf ears. Five all-votes and one-party-appointed jobs are not healthy for government. I'm not a politician. I've lived here my whole life. My wife and I raised our family here, and I built a new home in Auburn. I'm a hard-working, concerned taxpayer that wants to be heard. I want to be a voice for all concerned citizens in Auburn.
Thank you, Mr. LaCastro. We'll now turn to Councilor Carver-Hall, who is on the Democratic Working Families Party and Auburn Party. Welcome.
Thank you. I would like to start by thanking Jeremy Boyer and The Citizen, Guy Cosentino, Steve Keeler, and the Cugia Community College Telecom Department for holding these debates and for sharing them. Over the last four years, I have watched our city change and grow as a community. I am proud to be a part of the improved quality of life here in Auburn, New York. For those of you who don't know me, I am Dia Carver-Hall, and I am your city councillor. I am one of five women to ever serve in council chambers in City Hall, and the only Hispanic-American ever to serve, and I am proud of that. I am part of the most diverse city council ever. We are two women, three people of Italian descent, three people of Irish descent, two United States veterans, three educators, a businessman, an administrator, an actress, a movie producer, a photographer, and two musicians, a former city clerk, a former fire chief, all parents, all of us lifelong Auburnians, all with the leadership experience and with leadership temperaments. And ladies and gentlemen, we are your city council. We have brought this city to unprecedented and undeniable growth. We are financially healthy. Our parks and playgrounds are being maintained and improved. There are infrastructure improvements throughout the city, and our arts and cultural experiences like no other small city in all of central New York. To quote Eleanor Roosevelt, "The future is literally in our hands to mold as we like, but we cannot wait until tomorrow. Tomorrow is now." This council has lived that philosophy, not through boastful words, but through action, and I am filled with gratitude to be a part of this council. The future is shining bright in Auburn, New York. You trusted me four years ago by electing me to the city council. I ask that you trust me again with your vote on November 5th. I am Dia Carver-Hall, and I am your city councillor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We'll now turn to Jimmy Genetino, who's a member of the council. He's on the Democratic Working Families Party and Auburn Party. Mr. Genetino.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to thank Mr. Cosentino and Mr. Boyer for moderating today's debate, and the students of Cugia Community College for their work in making it available to the public, and the candidates for taking the time to be here to debate the issues. My name is Jimmy Genetino, and I am running for reelection to Auburn City Council. I was born and raised in Auburn, and at the age of 17, made the decision to serve our country in the United States Air Force. For five years, I was stationed throughout the country, and while I enjoyed each duty assignment for the new opportunities offered and friends made, at the end of my commitment, I made the decision to move back to Auburn. I miss my family in the city I called home. I felt strongly that I wanted my children to be raised in the same community that was so much a part of who I am. Upon returning to Auburn, I was fortunate enough to start a career with a locally-owned, family-run company, Meden. I had been employed there for the past 21 years, and am currently the Assistant Operations Manager. I took advantage of the GI Bill and finished my education, obtaining a master's degree from SUNY Oswego. Four years ago, I was a first-time candidate for public office. I chose that time and place to run for office because I felt this city was at a crossroads. After decades of stagnation, Auburn was a city in the midst of a cultural renaissance and on the brink of rediscovery. Our city needed and deserved leadership that would seize the opportunity, leadership that was well-rounded and open to new ideas. Our city deserved elected officials that would conduct business in a respectful and decent manner, that would lead by example, and make decisions with one goal in mind: what is best for Auburn. Four years ago, I made these promises to the people of Auburn, and I believe I have kept my word. During my first term in office, I worked tirelessly with my colleagues on council, city manager Jeff Deiger, and our talented professional city staff to advance a progressive agenda that has clearly made a difference throughout our city. Members of this council have been present throughout the community and have actively advocated for the issues that matter: economic development, the opiate epidemic, water quality, state and federal funding, housing issues, parks, and more. While we have had great success in recent years, I believe there's more work to do, and that Auburn's potential is unlimited. That is why I have chosen to run for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Genetino. Mr. Burchard, welcome. You're on the Libertarian line. Welcome to the studio.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Boyer, Mr. Cosentino, and for the staff at the Cugia Community College students, and all their hard work that they've done to put this on today. I'm running for city council because I wanted to see the city come back to the roots that it was when I was growing up. When I was a kid, there was a lot of youth activities and things to do, and today, the children are being put on the back burner. I've seen a lot of decline in the city as far as businesses go that have to do with youth activities, that want to provide pilot programs to those kinds of businesses that can come into the city, and will allow our children to be able to have things to do to distract them from choosing drugs over being productive parts of society. It took a lot of thought into deciding to run for city council, and I know that I don't have any political background, but I have lived in Auburn my whole life, or at least since I was 20, my entire adult life, and I just want to see the city come back to a place where I can raise a family and see taxes come to a point where it's affordable to live here. I'm asking for your vote on November 5th, and I appreciate everyone allowing us to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burchard. Mr. Miller, welcome back. Mr. Miller is on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent lines. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to the college for inviting us. Thank you, Mr. Boyer, Mr. Cosentino. Always a good time to come together and discuss the issues. I'm running this year because I don't like the direction that our city is going. Going door-to-door, speaking with different people, I've run into the same topic, that they feel that their voice is being ignored. I've talked to many people that have called different members of the city government, wherever they're directed to call or get ahold of, and they're either ignored completely or just put on the back burner. I see that as a serious problem. A city is only as strong as its citizens, and if our citizens don't feel that they are empowered, then how can we move forward? We have a problem with not just businesses leaving, but also the growth of only one section of town. I'd like to see a growth for the entire city that includes outside of downtown. I'd like to see us reach out and bring businesses and industry back to Auburn, places that we can employ our citizens and give them a chance to thrive and grow in the city that we call home. There's so much more that we could be doing, and we need to prioritize our needs and our wants in the city of Auburn, so that we can get our spending under control, so that we can lower our taxes, and, like I said, give people the chance to thrive in the city that they love. I think that we have a very rich history here that we can point back to and learn from, and that we can, in turn, do something great here today, so that we can make history and history's hometown, and give future generations the chance to be proud of the city that they call home as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. As you all have nicely mentioned, the college students up here, JT is our timekeeper. She can keep you on track, give you a high sign when there's 30 seconds to go on your two-minute answers, and then put up a red card when it's time to finish, and I will gently try to nudge you along. We'll now have Mr. Boyer for the next hour-plus. Mr. Boyer, welcome.
Okay, and thank you, everyone, for coming today, and we'll try to cover as much ground as we can with five candidates giving answers. Sometimes it can take a while to get through one, but we'll see what we can do. So I'm going to start with a few different, I guess you could call them, projects, building projects that are in the process of happening or have happened in the city, and just get your thoughts on how they were handled, what they've done for the city or could do for the city. The first one I'm going to start with is the New York State Equal Rights Heritage Center, which we opened almost, I think, a year ago. I think it was last November that it opened officially. And so that's a full year to kind of see what has the impact truly been on the city. Has it, you know, how has it impacted downtown? How has it impacted bringing people to the area? What's it doing for residents? So I just ask all the candidates to evaluate that, the impact, good or bad, for the city of that newly-built Equal Rights Heritage Center.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. LaCastro. We have two minutes.
I'm 100% for the Heritage Center. It just seems like it might have gone in the wrong location. Now we've got to figure out how to get people in there. We took a parking lot from the YMCA that I know the people aren't happy about that. We've got to move forward with it. I mean, we got it now. We've got to figure out what we're going to do with it. Like I said, I don't think it's drawn as many people right off the bat as we thought it was going to be. It was a good parking lot that, down the road, probably would have helped downtown, and now we don't have it. Like I said, we can't look back on it. We've got to move forward.
Thank you. Councillor, you have two minutes on the Equal Rights Heritage Center.
Oh, thank you. This is one of my favorite projects. So $10 million of upstate revitalization money came to Auburn to build the Equal Rights Heritage Center. It is a beautiful homage to the burnt-over district, which is part of New York State's history. It's perfectly placed between the Seward Museum and the historic City Hall. We have historic South Street leading up to it. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. In addition to $10 million of upstate revitalization monies, also $500,000 of Department of Transportation money came to Auburn to reconstruct William Street. We know what a mess that curvature was in the middle of, at the T of William Street and Lincoln Street. So that's beautiful, as well as NYSERDA money to clean up the, $50,000 of NYSERDA money, to clean up the energy community's geothermal heating and cooling for that building. It's a beautiful building. What I'd like to say about it, it's success. It's brought many, many people to downtown Auburn. So sales tax is up. There are things to do. The events that are happening there weekly, there's a book club, and as well as, we had tourism councils from all over the state come to the Equal Rights Heritage Center. And I can't help but mention the beautiful statue of Harriet Tubman that was donated by the Cuthbert family in that quad, that embodies what Auburn is, its history, and its history in equal rights. So I'm proud of the project. I believe there's more to do. Oh, and I didn't even mention the market that's happening every Saturday morning with live music. It's just such a vibrant area. It's a proud project for Auburn.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Genetino, this issue of the Equal Rights Heritage Center?
Thank you. Tourism is vital to our economy here in upstate New York. To pay for services in the city, we have four ways that we do that: property taxes, state and federal funding, and sales tax. Tourism is so vital, let me give you the numbers. $100 million a year in spending in Cugia County, $14 million a year in sales tax, 1,500 jobs, which equates to $300 per year in property tax savings for each property in Cugia County. I would say this project has been a tremendous success. We have seen over 6,000 people come through the doors since it's opened. As Councilor Carver-Hall just mentioned, we had a tourism conference here in Auburn, where tourism directors from all 62 counties across the state came and got to see what we have to offer here in Auburn: our cultural sites, our historic sites, our great restaurants, our breweries. It provided local jobs. If you look at the contract and the firms that worked on it, several of those were local construction firms who benefited from this project. The other thing I want to highlight is this was a bipartisan effort. Then-State Senator DeFrancisco was fully in support of it, Assemblyman Gary Finch, now Senator Bob Antonacci, and Senator Pam Helming. They frequently visit. They speak of the very positive impact it's had on our economy, and I'm tremendously proud of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burchard, your thoughts on the Equal Rights Heritage Center?
Thank you. The Equal Rights Heritage Center, I believe, is a very important part of our city. I am very happy to see that Harriet Tubman and get recognition for the Equal Rights Heritage Center, at the Equal Rights Heritage Center. When I went to this college, I went, I was in the history club, and we lobbied Congress to be able to turn Harriet Tubman's home into a national park. So this is something that I'm very happy that history is being recognized because it was almost forgotten. I do agree with Mr. LaCastro that the area that it's in, it did take away a parking lot that I have had a few voters tell me is, was very important to them, especially, you know, it makes it harder to park at the YMCA, which is important. So we could have put it in a different spot, maybe closer to the Harriet Tubman home, but where it is, we can't change that. But I am very happy that history is being recognized in a city that is, has a lot of rich history in it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, your thoughts?
Yeah, so like Mr. Genetino said, tourism is important to our community, especially in a small community like ours. It's something that we can rely heavily on, especially with as rich of history that we have here. That being said, you know, I can't deny that the Equal Rights Heritage Center has brought visitors, more visitors, more foot traffic through town, but I would also have to agree that its location is not the greatest. That was the biggest concern two years ago when we debated the issue, and it's still the main concern of most people today. It's not the fact that we have the Equal Rights Heritage Center, or some type of welcome center or visitor center, it's that we lost vital parking. And that goes back to my opening statement, where people have voiced their concerns, and they were ignored completely. We were told two years ago that that location was picked because the city owned it, and that's where it was going. And I raised the question then, and I still raise the question today: just because the city owns the property, why shouldn't the citizens have that much more of a say as to what happens there? Because technically, it is their property. Like I said, I don't deny that it has increased our tourism. I don't deny that we've seen profit come from it. I would definitely like to continue to work, if elected, with all those involved with the project, to come up with more ideas and things to do there, so that we can continue to make money off of it, bring even more visitors. But like I said, overall, I just don't feel that that was the location.
Councillor Carver-Hall, you have one minute?
So I'm old enough to remember when there was no parking problem in downtown Auburn. In fact, you could park anywhere you wanted, because not a lot of people were downtown. So people are coming downtown. We responded to the concerns of parking, and we got a grant to build and expand the Court Street parking lot, which is new parking. It's beautiful. It's accessible for all of the YMCA to park there. I just wanted to point that out, as well as moving toward betterment of the parking garage. So I wanted to point that out.
Okay. Mr. Genetino, then, Mr. Burchard.
Thank you, Mr. Cosentino. I'd like to address the issue of the location as well. It was not a location that we just randomly picked. It was a location that was discussed with the state of New York. One of the requirements the state of New York put on us is that it had to be city-owned property, and it had to be new construction. There were countless public meetings when it came to gathering citizen input for this project. Not everybody was in favor of the location, but there were people who were in favor of the location, specifically some of the stakeholders involved, and we listened to them. We also listened to the people by expanding the Court Street lot and making parking in the parking garage free for two hours. So, you know, I take exception to the fact that we didn't listen to the people. The meetings were very public. Everybody was welcome to attend, and we took everybody's input to heart. Thank you.
Mr. Burchard, you'll have a minute, then, Mr. Miller.
Well, what we were saying about the parking and about the location of the area is not, in my opinion personally, it's what I've heard from the voters. So this is just another, it's just another example of the council not listening to what the people had to say about where it is and what it did for them. I know that people that I know have had trouble parking to be able to go to the YMCA, because that's where they always parked. For 30 years, that's where they would always park, and now they can't park there anymore because it's used for an Equal Rights Center that they're not getting use of. I can't deny that the place is bringing up traffic into downtown, and I understand that your hands were tied as far as it had to be city-owned property, but I'm sure that there's a lot of city-owned property that could have been used. If there wasn't, then there wouldn't have been debates about it. But I just think that we need to listen to the voters, listen to the people that use the YMCA, and not take away the parking lot from them. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, you'll have one minute as well, and then we'll go to Mr. LaCastro.
Thank you. So I think one of the biggest issues that I heard with that response was that we had to do it because the state told us that's where it had to go, or it had to be on city-owned property. I was always under the impression that a public servant was beholden to the voters, not the state. So to ignore the will, the voice of the people, I understand that there was some that wanted that location and some didn't. Overall, the majority of people that I talked to, going door-to-door, did not want that location. And I think that we did a real disservice to the community when our city government, that's supposed to represent the voice of the people of the city of Auburn, chose to go with what the state told them to do, rather than what the citizens of the city wanted.
Mr. LaCastro, you'll have one minute as well.
I'm a number and facts guy. We haven't seen any reports on how it did the very first year, and I'm anxious to see them numbers, to see if it's costing the taxpayers money or it's taking care of itself.
Councillor Carver-Hall, you'll have one minute.
I'm also old enough to remember that during the expansion of Route 5 and during urban renewal, a beautiful historic building, the Women's Union, was taken down. That was what was there in that parking lot. It was taken down to create the Loop Road. So the city made lemonade out of lemons. They made it a parking lot. By default, it became a parking lot, not by plan. So now we've replaced it with another beautiful building that suits the historic neighborhood.
Mr. Genetino, you'll have one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Cosentino. I'd like to respond to Mr. Miller's comment about how government works and the will of the people. You know, when you're in local government, you quickly learn that you have to balance the requirements and the mandates of state and federal government with what's best for the people of the city that you represent. This was a $10 million investment, a majority of which was not taxpayer money. It was money that was won by New York State in suing big banks for bad practices. We brought $10 million in investment into this city. That is steady leadership making progress for Auburn. Thank you.
I'll turn to Mr. Boyer.
All right. So just keep in mind, I love the rebuttals.
Nice first question.
Yeah, I was going to say, I love the rebuttals. Keep them coming, but we'll try to get to as many issues as we can, too. The next one I wanted to ask about was the public safety building that's in the planning stages now. And really specifically, I want to ask about the downtown revitalization initiative that brought another roughly $10 million to the city. $1.2 million of that was awarded for this project, to build the public safety complex for the fire department primarily out at the Seminary Plaza. So the question I have, and I think we'll start with Ms. Carver-Hall, because it's her turn, and secondly, she was on that committee, if I'm not mistaken, about, on the planning committee for the DRI. It's just, why was that a good project to include in the DRI? You know, the DRI ostensibly is downtown economic development, so why does a public safety building tie into that?
Well, it fit the criteria, first of all. The criteria for the downtown revitalization was that it had to be in a certain area. That area and Seminary Street had already been tagged for the project prior. So the projects could be municipal projects, or private investment projects, or they could also be, they could be non-for-profit organizations to invest in the city. So that particular project not only met the criteria of where it was going to be placed, but also in one of those three broad categories, so the city itself can apply for the same funding. So that was one of the reasons it was included. Another reason is the need, right? There needs to be shown a community need for that project. The current firehouse, as we know, is obsolete. It doesn't fit, the fire trucks don't fit in there, the floor doesn't hold the weight of those fire trucks. We need to move these projects forward. So any way that we can take the burden of moving these projects forward by relieving the taxpayer of some of that burden, we should. So that's why it ended up as part of the DRI. The other issue is, regardless of whether or not the DRI existed, the public safety building needs to move forward. The other building is obsolete. So in retaining $2.5 million toward a $10 million project, we have relieved the taxpayer of part of that burden. So it is helpful, and then there are other, the money needs to be leveraged as well. So there are other grants and other money sources that perhaps can be sought.
Thank you. This is for everyone, so we'll start, we'll continue with Mr. Genetino.
Thank you, Guy. I'd like to build on what Councillor Carver-Hall said. This project fell within the boundaries of the DRI as outlined by the committee and the state. I'd like to also note that Willard Chabel, which is a neighbor of the site, is also included in the DRI. So it fell well within the criteria. I want to talk a little bit about why this project is needed. It's a project that's been discussed for three decades. It is a project that must happen. As a local elect official, you don't realize you're going to lose sleep over things, and there's several things that I lose sleep over: water quality, the opiate crisis, and whether or not we're going to get a phone call, the fire truck fell through the floor of that building. It's a very real concern. The funding that we're able to receive from the state covers one-third of a $10 million price tag. This is unprecedented in the state. There are no other municipalities who have been able to do this. So the time to construct this building is now. The location has been properly vetted. The grants that we have do not allow us to do rehab to the existing structure, and even if if we did, it would not suit the needs of a 21st Fire Department. So I'm in favor of this project. I'm happy that we're able to bring this funding to the city of Auburn. Again, this is an example of steady leadership making progress for Auburn. Thank you.